This is the Commissioner meeting of December 18th, 2024 at 6:00 PM at the Sussex County Administrative Center, Commissioner Meeting Room, One Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner DeGroot?
Here.
Commissioner Hayden?
Here.
Commissioner Schick?
Here.
Director Space?
Here.
Deputy Director Carney?
Here.
Moment of silence and salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For a public statement pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice as defined by Section 3D of Chapter 231, PL 1975, has been made by regular mail and email, such notice being submitted on January 7th, 2024, from the Administrative Center of the County of Sussex located at One Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey, to the following: New Jersey Herald/Star Ledger, and is also posted on the bulletin board, maintained in the Administrative Center for Public Announcements, and has been submitted to the Sussex County Clerk in compliance with said act. At this time, please mute all electronic devices. Number five, approval of agenda. Tonight, we have two amendments to tonight's agenda. First, we are looking to table Item 14V. The second is that we are amending the personnel agenda to correct a title change that was voted on at the meeting of December 11th, 2024. The approved position: County Division Head, Director of Internal Affairs, to be re-titled County Division Head, Director of Special Services. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Still moved.
Second. Okay, Deputy Director Carney, and a second from Commissioner DeGroot, and discussion. Item 14V is being tabled since this resolution was not presented at the previously held agenda meeting. It was only placed on the agenda tonight at the direction of the CFO, but was not reviewed by all relevant departments and parties. One thing that I've been looking into over the past year is a 26-week pay period, but that is not what this was. The Board and I are not looking to rush to implement policies until we are able to consider the impact on everyone. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. We have no proclamations, certificates, and presentations, no public hearing, public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make a comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item. Please line up at the microphone and state your name, municipality, and agenda topic for the record. Can I get a motion to open the floor for public comment?
Still moved.
Okay, Commissioner Schick, and a second, Commissioner DeGroot, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. The floor is open for agenda topics only. Okay, and then being present, can I get a motion to close the floor for public comment?
Still moved.
Okay, Commissioner DeGroot and Commissioner Schick, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstain? Number nine, Commissioners' comments. We'll start with Commissioner Hayden.
So, we had the pleasure of doing budget hearings Monday for Capitol, Commissioner DeGroot and I, and everybody came in with small asks, I think. There were a couple of things we could pare down, but I think it was fair asks of everybody, and I think it'll help the taxpayers what we dealt with, so really all I have right now.
Nice. Commissioner Schick?
I don't have any comments for this meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner DeGroot?
So, last Friday, I traveled south to Trenton to attend NJAC's Year-End Summit, which centered on artificial intelligence and cybersecurity, provided county commissioners from across the street with valuable opportunities to talk and gain insights from industry leaders on leveraging AI to enhance organization and efficiency within county government. The summit also emphasized the critical importance of proactive cybersecurity measures to safeguard against threats before it's too late. A very big thank you to NJAC Executive Director John Adadio for organizing a really wonderful event. On Monday, as Commissioner Hayden mentioned, him and I participated in the Capitol Budget Meetings. Many thanks to Elka, Christina, Lorraine, as well as Ron, for coordinating these productive sessions with department heads. I believe they did an excellent job presenting their Capitol requests, offering thoughtful and well-prepared explanations that focused on maximizing the county's ability to deliver top-quality services with longevity and optimization in mind. Overall, it was very informative, and most importantly, a productive day at the county office. Additionally, last week, the county received another generous donation of seeds for our county's seed library. With this donation, we're now finalizing preparations for the seed library launch through senior services this January. In the coming weeks, we'll be completing the 2025 calendar for Phase 2, 3, and 4 of the program, which will focus on seed distribution, education, as well as retention recording for the initiative's success. Even at the NJAC Summit, it was brought up to me by the Camden County Commissioners who applauded this effort, which was a nice surprise. Last but not least, this morning, the Tax Board held an engaging and informative meeting, as several municipalities met for discussions on reevaluations, reassessments, and rollbacks. I do want to take a moment to applaud our Tax Board Commissioners and our dedicated county tax administrator, Melissa Rockwell, their expertise and ability to clearly explain the statistics, analytics, and reasonings behind the various actions that took place, whether it was to the municipal tax assessors, the mayor, the council, or even just the individual taxpayers present. It was really remarkable. Their knowledge and professionalism are very valuable assets to our county, and I just wanted to make, you know, everyone aware of their efforts and all the hard work that they do. With that, that's all I have for this week. Merry Christmas. God bless.
Christmas. Deputy Director Carney?
I will be brief. I know this is Commissioner Schick's last meeting, so I just want to thank him for his service here. I think it's been a good year. I think we got a lot accomplished. I don't think this is going to be the last of you. I know you aspire to do other things, if not, one day come back here to continue the work, but I really appreciate your help here, as the county, I believe, does as well. And again, just thank you for your service at the time that you're here. I think we worked well together, and looking forward to working with you in the future on some other things and topics and what have you.
Thank you.
Am I right? And that's all I have.
Okay, that was nice and quick for you. Okay, Division of Senior Services, New Jersey Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, NJSNAP, there is a resolution on the agenda this evening authorizing the Division of Senior Services to submit an application for the AAA NJSNAP Application Assistance Grant in the amount of $100,000. This funding will allow senior services to assist older adults, 60-plus, and individuals with disabilities 18 and over with the application process for the New Jersey Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, NJSNAP, as well as applications for NJSave and NJFamily Care. New Jersey's Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, SNAP, provides food assistance to individuals and families with low incomes to help them buy groceries through a benefits credit card, well, not credit card, benefits card accepted in most retail food stores and some farmers' markets. Eligibility is set by several factors, such as income and resources. NJSaves helps low-income older adults and individuals with disabilities save money on Medicare premiums, prescription costs, and other living expenses. New Jersey Family Care is a federal and state-funded health insurance program created to help qualified New Jersey residents of any age access affordable health insurance. To learn more about the application assistance for these programs and the many other services available through the Division of Senior Services, call 973-579-0555. And I would first like to thank my fellow Commissioners for giving me the honor of serving as Director this year. It's been quite an exciting year, putting the best interests of Sussex County first always. We've had so many things to be proud of by working together. We finalized the purchase of the Dennis Library, which will get the needed upgrades now to make it ADA compliant. We transferred $100,000 to Sussex Tech, enabling them to save two shops on the chopping block, cut 1.1 million from the College Chapter 12 funding that was not needed, and put that into 550,000 back into our capital for next year. We passed the $122.8 million budget in March, keeping the tax increase at a low 0.89%, and that was all by working together. We passed the budget quickly and effectively. We also allocated all of the American Rescue Plan funds. We also started a support group for our Sussex County veterans, just to name a few things, and I would like to thank Rayanne Gru, who is here, and Lorraine Hens for that. And we brought our meetings online so that people can watch from the comfort of their home, plus numerous other things. I want to thank Earl also for the last, you know, 10 and a half months that you served with us. It's been a pleasure. You have been very dedicated, and I appreciate everything that you've done for Sussex County, and like Chris said, I look forward to working with you again in the future on other things, and oh, you're gonna make me cry too. So, thanks for being here, Earl. I wish you and Donna the best, which I see Donna came today too, so thank you. And I attended on Saturday a very crowded Reach Across America ceremony at the Northwest Veterans Ceremony, along with incoming Commissioner Allen Henderson, and it was very cold but very well-attended, and it was nicely put on. I've been enjoying that the last few years. Also attended the Sussex County Economic Development Partnership Meeting today with Mr. Ron Tappin, and that's always very interesting, good things coming to Sussex County. Unfortunately, we aren't allowed to discuss them until they happen, but thank you again, everyone, and I look forward to 2025. Okay, number 10, there is no consent agenda. Number 11, approval of minutes, there are none. Number 12, no ordinances. 13, no appointments. Number 14, resolutions. Can I get a motion to adopt the resolutions A through U? Okay, Commissioner Schick, and a second?
Second.
Commissioner DeGroot, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Number 15, awards of contract change orders bids. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the award of contract change orders bids consisting of various proposed resolutions, and determined that the adoption of the said resolutions is in and will further the public interest. Can I get a motion to adopt the resolutions A through M?
Still moved.
Okay, Commissioner Schick, and a second?
Second.
Deputy Director Carney, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Financials, none. Personnel, a motion to approve the personnel agenda?
So moved.
Of 12, 18, 24, okay. Commissioner DeGroot, and a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Schick, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Okay, number 18, administrative report.
Wow, I've never been here this quick. I'm sorry. Thank you. No, I do, one thing that we can communicate on the economic development meeting we were at today, the percentage of tourism between June and September of this year was up 5.7% as compared to last year. A lot of people are coming to Sussex County. Hotel rates, hotel percentages were up, Airbnbs were up, and people were looking to come to Sussex County, and it was a good increase from where it was last year. Commissioner Schick, it's been a pleasure. It's been even more a pleasure to sit beside you and see you just literally sweat through all the issues that we went through this past year.
Emphasize sweat?
But no, it has. It's been nothing less than a pleasure to work with you, my Bruce brother, and I'll see you soon there. And it's always been a pleasure sitting with you and going through the issues. You've always been very open and understanding, and when we talk about issues that sometimes we don't understand yet, you seek for clarity, and God knows, as an administrator, you can't ask for anything better than that, so.
Thank you.
Godspeed. Hey, Ron, just real quick, sorry. Could you just give us an update on the meters and then the jail subdivision where we're at?
Okay, so, the meters are ordered, they're on the way.
Okay.
They're being shipped. That was done, we got confirmation of that this week. The jail was in front of the Newton Planning Board as of today, and they've got some revisions that we're gonna have to do on easements for wastewater and water. It didn't appear on the original survey that we had on it. They're concerned that if we sell it and the owner has to make repairs on that, it's their responsibility, and we should identify the line in the sand of what's ours versus theirs versus Newton. So Keith is going back to the drawing board tomorrow to revise that to get on the next meeting in January. So that's where we're at on that.
For the easements?
For the easements.
Okay, and then the meters will come in?
Nope.
Next month?
I would hope so.
Start off the year like that?
Yep.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Okay, 19, County Council Report. Okay, Merry Christmas. Okay, Merry Christmas. 20, unfinished business.
I just have a little unfinished business myself again. Maybe this could go back to County Council. I did get an email, I think, well, the Commissioners did, I guess, from Katie Fina regarding the survey. That is something that we can do now.
Yeah, if we have the ability to do it.
Is that not a conflict? Is that, that's not a conflict? Because it's not a third party, just because it's not a third party. We're buying it, it's our survey.
That's for Providence Bank? Yeah. Well, I authorized tonight the waivers and all that, we need it. We'll ask to see if we can do it internally. I don't know, she may be able to get that surveyor in quicker than what we can. I don't know that. I'd rather get the fastest one there, because we are behind the curve on this one.
Our survey, if we want to do it ourselves, and we have somebody, a licensed surveyor, we can't, just like our inspections.
Right, so I'll ask that tomorrow.
Same thing. Okay, well, let's just find out what could be faster, that's all.
We, the environmental study is in, we're good. We don't have to have the Phase 2. The generator test came in good, adding inspections came in good. So far, we're good. Title search has been asked for, I don't know if we've gotten that yet, and the survey's the next thing, so.
Roof was good, inspections were all good.
No, inspections is fine.
Inspections came back fine, Keith did that. I don't know that the title package is back, but it should be, fourth time it's been, it was worth it, so. Is this still on sleep to close this year?
We're trying to. The bank wants to close, and the bank desperately wants to close by the end of the year.
Depends on when the title binder comes back, that's the main thing. I mean, we're gonna start bucking up against two holidays, it depends on, I mean, it's a third party that's providing the title search, so.
I'm sure the Realtor wants it closed.
I think they close.
Everybody gets yours, like does we do.
It's a mutual thing that they just, they call every day, so. I mean, we're as anxious as they are, you just can't move so fast, like Council said, you've got third-party people that are having Christmas parties and shit, stuff like that, it's hard to pull them along, but we call every day.
We've done it, we have to, part of how we've done.
Perfect.
We're ready for it.
21, new business. Anyone?
I have new business too. Told you I had more. I'm not sure, Christina?
Can you pull your mic closer to you, because?
Can you not hear?
Yeah, you'll be able to hear it echo once it's close.
Yeah, I just don't talk loud enough. SEC Dorm Presentation, that is scheduled for?
January 8th.
January 8th, and they're coming here, that's our regular, our press, regular meeting. And he plans on going over everything that have to do with the dorms.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, any other new business? No. Okay, 22, public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make general comments of three minutes or less on non-agenda topics. Please line up at the microphone and state your name and municipality for the record. Can I get a motion to open the floor for public comment?
Second.
Commissioner DeGroot, and a second, Commissioner Schick. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstain? Okay, the floor is open for public comment.
Kathy Brennan, Hampton Township. Yes, I'm back, I was on it until the last meeting.
We missed you.
I just wanted to start off by saying, last time I was here, as far as the food pantry, I was hoping that things had settled down after that stuffed the bus, but apparently that's not true. I've been seeing things on social media posted by associates of the person making accusations of possible food mishandling, and again, discrepancies in monies, and I'm not sure why something that for so long was not perceived as a problem is now being made into a problem, and therefore, I'm afraid that by doing this, it could become a problem, it could become an issue with some people, and some people perhaps wouldn't want to be involved with it anymore because they don't want to be involved in the drama, which I would hope would not happen. And I wonder if it's some sort of personal thing to try to get some attention, or perhaps it's to take attention away from other things? I mean, as someone who says they are a truth seeker, I think it's time, long overdue time, that we were given some answers about something that happened quite a while ago about stolen valor, and we were never actually been told anything. And I would hope that that would happen in the near future, and I also hope that the food pantry continues well, and that this negative publicity does not hurt it.
Thank you, and I will say there is no missing $500,000 in money, of the county's money. The county has not lost any $500,000, that we didn't take in any $500,000, so thank you. And we do support the food pantry. Okay, anyone else?
Hi, Diane Root, Hampton Township. I also represent PVA Local 138, Sheriff's Bargaining Unit, Prosecutor's Office, and the jail. We recently entered into contract negotiations with everybody, and I thank you very much for that. I just wanted, I'm sorry, Diane Root, Hampton Township, represent PVA. I also work with Prosecutor's Office. We just started contract negotiations, and I just wanted to bring the fact to the Board that we are the lowest-paid prosecutor's office out of the 21 counties, and I wanted to bring a table of, to your attention, that just gives literally every prosecutor's office in the state to the matter, and just to your attention. There was an article published today by the county watchdog saying that there was perhaps a proposal going forward that there may or may not be raises coming to the freeholders. I hope that's not the case, and if it is, I just would hope that somebody would maybe take into consideration that there are many labor negotiations coming up, and that everybody would be treated fairly. That's all I'm asking.
Yeah, there are no raises coming to the Commissioner Board, so you cannot read, and I will go on the record, and I will guarantee that there will not be a raise, that that is just hearsay, and he likes to write a lot of things that are not true.
It'd be wrong to give ourselves raises when we have employees that still need assistance.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, there's no raises coming our way.
I really truly appreciate that.
Thank you.
That makes 135 of our members feel much better.
Yeah, and I will say, yeah, and I will say for the record also that the last time that they changed the salary of the freeholders/Commissioners now was in 2001, so it was a long time, yeah.
Well, thank you for clarifying that, because that makes all 135 of my members feel much better.
Thank you, thank you. And I do, we do still want to see that, we've all been asking for that all year.
I appreciate that, thank you very much.
Yeah, can I just add, Director?
Yes.
Can I just add real quick? Yeah, Diane, do yourself a favor and like block that watchdog, because it's pretty, it's garbage, it really is, a joke, as the writer.
Like I said, I saw that and my stomach was growing.
Yeah, just block it, you're better off.
But when it's emailed to you by about 40 members?
Yeah, well, I think the guys who write that are pretty obnoxious people, so you'll have that.
Anyone else? Can I get a motion to close the floor for public comment and return to regular business? Okay, Commissioner Hayden? Okay, Commissioner Hayden, and a second? Commissioner DeGroot, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Number twenty-three, reminders. Please check the county's website at W. 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 dot Sussex dot N. J. dot U. S. for meeting schedules. Our reorganization will be on January first at twelve P. M. at the old historic courthouse right up the hill. There is no executive session and adjournment. Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting? Commissioner Hayden, and a second? Commissioner Schick, all in, any discussion? All in favor? Nope, okay. Meeting closed. The new record, six twenty-four P. M. Thank you. He tried.